He's knocking for you.
I'm knocking.
Yeah, he's saying okay.
He's knocking too.
I've got one minute.
You can wait for me.
There you go.
Beautiful. All right, welcome everybody. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's a good showing. Just want to remind everybody, if you come up, to keep it to five minutes. Everybody will have five minutes up. And remind everybody on the panel, the councilors, to try to keep everything to the topic at hand so we don't get too far off course. First, if we could have roll call.
Deacon?
He said he was gonna be a minute late.
Gaba?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Pomelo?
Here.
Thomas?
Yeah.
And Watson is excused.
And so is in Terry.
Yep.
And meaning, minutes of previous meeting?
We'd like to make a motion to amend page 25 to add the word "out" on the last sentence on there. It was just a typo from the last one. It should say, "Vote on motion to accept easement without propane."
I'll second that.
All in favor? Ananamous? Petitions and communications?
Could I speak? I'd like to make a motion to add an order 1925 to tonight's agenda. It's a, to waive a bid process, requirement process for purchase of a used chipper for the Public Works Department. I'd like to bring this 1925, I can speak on it later this evening, but we've found a 54-hour wood chipper that is going through auction and we had put in around $75,000 in this year's budget for a new chipper. Our old one is, I think, in 1991 and it was in this year's budget. We could, hopefully are gonna save $25,000, $30,000 by possibly purchasing this. So I'd like to make a motion, ananamous consent, to bring this order forward.
Anybody want a second?
Second out.
All in favor? So passes? Okay. Petitions and communications?
I think, just point of order, Chair, I think we need to, we amended the minutes. I think we still need to vote them in. We need to vote on the minutes as amended.
Okay. Actually, thank you for that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Now petitions and communications, anything? Nope, moving on. Report of the town manager?
I will be brief. Staff did meet last week and our purpose was to go over budgets. They're pretty, they're all in and we expect to bring them forward soon. And I wanted to just draw attention to our Public Works Department. We thank them for keeping our roads nice and black and safe for all of our residents. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
All you got? Thank you. Public hearings?
Yes, first up is 133-24. Amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181, Land Use, Part 1, Zoning, FBCVD, SLV, Commercial Streets, Article 2, Definitions in Article 3, District Regulations.
Motion to waive reading. Second?
All in favor? Who passes?
Can you just make mention to this?
Yeah, sure. This is just the final, this is the public hearing on this order. So this would, this order essentially adds a business-focused district to our Sebagel Lake Village zoning district. And it was spurred discussions around the redevelopment of our gravel pit down there on Chadbourne. And again, it was just trying to add a little bit of commercial and industrial uses to that area. Let me know if any other questions.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to the public. I see nobody. Open it up to the council.
Just, this is a great opportunity for the town to standish. It brings us in having a commercial zone, which we've been struggling with, bringing business into town. And it's located on 114 and 35, so it's not gonna be traveling through more, a lot of neighborhoods and stuff. But great, great opportunity for the town to standish to fast-forward to bring in a lot, a more commercial industry back into this town and jobs. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? If we can have a vote?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
And next up, we have 135-24. Amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Section 263-1, Prohibited Parking. The town is standish hereby ordains that Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Section 263-1, Prohibited Parking, be and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out.
I'd like to waive the reading.
Second?
All in favor? There we go.
Zach? John?
John, please.
John?
John Cross, Public Works. This is to extend the no parking on Harmon's Beach Road on either side of New Begin Way, which is the road into the beach, 500 feet on each side.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to the public. Town council? De, Mr. Deacon?
I just wanted to ask, has there ever been, I know there's concern about parking close to the water and obstructing certain areas close to the water, but when people aren't able to use that, where do they park? And is there sufficient parking for people who do want to use that area?
The beach area has its own designated parking area. Just visual estimates, probably close to 100 spaces down there that's allowed for that down at the beach, down on the New Begin Way.
So as a result of this, people will not find it terribly difficult?
What has been happening is residents have been complaining, when the beach gate is closed, they've been parking along the road and accessing the beach down through that. And it creates traffic issues for public safety and everything of, it's, the roads not...
They can park, so when the, so this is when the parking area is closed?
When parking area is closed, no matter what, at any time, they're allowed to park 500 feet on either side of New Begin Way. There's also a previous ordinance in effect at the end of Harmon's Beach Road, where there's a public right-of-way access area to the beach that is limited to parking. I believe it's to one side of the road. There are two parking spots at the end that does permit parking down there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? That will close the public hearing. Can we have a vote?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Next up is 6-25. Application submitted by Millie, Inc., doing business as Standish House of Pizza, located at 35 Osipee Trail West, for renewal of malt, liquor, beer, and wine, restaurant license class 1, 2, 3, and 4. Order that the application submitted by Millie, Inc., doing business as Standish House of Pizza, located at 35 Osipee Trail West, for renewal malt, liquor, beer, and wine, restaurant license class 1, 2, 3, 4, is approved by council to expire as determined by the Department of Public Safety.
Is there anyone here like to speak on that? Anybody from the council? Yes.
I noticed the application, I don't think, is complete. Number seven on the application asks if they have a valid and current health license. It says no. And then the license that they attach to their application indicates expired on January 6, 2025. I couldn't tell from our ordinance if we require a food license or not. So my, I would like to make a motion to approve this pending the determination of whether they need a food license and the ability to update that application.
Mary, I actually have a question. I know that this is a new application. Could that have been overlooked or an error when they?
I called the...
Could you come to the mic, please?
Thank you.
I love you.
That was brought to my attention. I called the applicant, they're gonna check into that this evening. His wife was not at home tonight. He wasn't, he wasn't positive.
I just, yeah, I know it was a new process, so thank you for following up on that.
Do you know if we require that?
Well, I'm not...
I think it's a requirement.
Okay.
So I'd like to second Counselor Thomas's motion.
All in favor? So, we will vote on it the way it is, pending approval of their health certificate permit.
All right, Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Perfect, it's five yeses. All right, so we move on to 7-25. Annual recommendation to adopt FY26, 10-year capital plan. Whereas the section 404 of Standish Charter requires annual presentation, revision, and adoption of a capital plan for the town of Standish now be it resolved that they attach. FY26, 10-year capital plan is hereby adopted.
And any further comments? Any council comments? Yes, Mr. Pomelo?
Chair of the Capitol improvements, and we look at this every year. It's a 10-year wish list. We try to figure out where we're gonna be every year. A number of years when we know we're struggling, we'll move equipment out or maybe something out. But it's basically your fire EMS rec and general administration is what they need to operate this coming year. One thing we did take out, there's been some going back and forth on the new Public Works Garage. It was 11 million this year. We've taken that out. We're looking at other options. We'll be bringing something back next year, hopefully less money. We did take that out, which is gonna work out well for us. Everything else is pretty cut and dry. The department heads have done a terrific job. Trust me, they watch your money. The Capitol Committee watches your money out there. And now this will go on to the Budget Committee and then on to, well, to the Town Council, Budget Committee, and then back to the Town Council. But it's basically the list of everything we need this year in town to keep all our departments running strong.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Deacon?
If the garage is removed, I know we're purchasing a number of vehicles for various departments. Will all of the vehicles being purchased have a place to be kept safe from the elements to help prolong their life and functionality? Yeah, we've, we don't have a place to put everything inside, but we do the best we can with what we have. But we've never seemed to, obviously a new garage would work well, but there again, we didn't think this was a year to bring an $11 million proposal forward this year. But...
Our goal is to be able to, be able to put all the vehicles into the garage, but we're trying to look at a way that we can save some money by changing the lot. So the current lot configuration, we feel by moving the lot to the Curtis Lot, which is at the intersection of Moody Road and Northeast Road, could save possibly a couple million dollars and have a better building to be able to store everything without the limitations. There's gradation issues with the lot currently that we're looking to use next to the sand building. It's over $700,000 and just fill needed, 13 feet difference in grade from where the building would start to where it would end. So we're trying to find a better lot where we could use the money better and save some money.
Would we benefit from any temporary structures to keep some of the equipment out of the immediate elements like canvas or some of these temporary structures that exist?
Again, you still need a lot to be able to do that on and we don't have that. I'm a firm believer, do it once, do it right. So the temporary is, we'd be just spending good money to chase other money that we need to spend to do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
I just want to understand, so the capital plan that was left, that was just handed to us, is that the one we're adopting or the one that was in our packet?
The one, because we...
The one with the writing on it?
Right, though, yes.
Thank you.
And just a quick note, on the rec side of it, we're able to implement some of our impact fees already for a truck and a, a truck and a tractor that is, we're probably gonna be able to use impact fees on that, which is gonna save us about $150,000 this year. So it's already, the impact fees that we've started to place forward is already starting to pay off. And that's gonna be coming along as we get into the budget process. We'll explain that more.
Any other questions? Can we take a roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Close the hearing. And next we'll do committee reports. If we can start down with Mr. Deacon.
I'm doing some background work on cemeteries. I understand from, after consulting the town clerk, that there are some, that the original notion of the cemetery group is that there should be other public persons involved, including people from entities that operate or are involved with cemeteries. So I'm going to be approaching the Appointments Committee to solicit additional names to work with the Cemeteries Committee.
Thank you very much.
The Economic Development Committee did not meet.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee met on, yesterday, actually. All the, you know, all the receivables are coming in on budget, and generally, the expenditures are on budget as well. And I would just like to remind the council that the schedule for budget season, Scott has left that with you this evening. So just, we've got a couple of those dates coming forward.
Thank you. And so the Appointments Committee and Personnel Committee have not met? Oh, wait, we did meet. Personal Committee met, and really nothing to report. We just moved along everything that we had talked about. I think everything went well.
Capital's been meeting on this 10-year plan. We've been real busy, and like I said, I think we've brought together a good plan this year.
Excellent. Consent calendar?
Yeah. 8-25, authorize Standish Memorial Post 128 of the American Legion to hold a charity toll on the Moody Road in August. 9-25, authorize Standish Lions Club to hold a charity toll on the Moody Road in June. And 10-25, waive no parking restriction on the northeast side of Saco Road for the Bonnie Eagle Car Show.
Any public comments? Any council comments?
Can we skip forward to 9-25?
Yeah, we did them collectively.
Okay. All right, gotcha.
Any council comments on any, any one of these three?
I have one comment.
Sure.
On the northeast side of Saco Road for the Bonnie Eagle Car Show, what had happened on Saco Road is the cars going to the Bonnie Eagle Car Show are parking on both sides of the road. Well, there's a drop-off, so the cars are parking in the road. So it's got, in the last few years, to the point that when people open their doors, you know, cars can't get by. You would have a hard time getting rescued down through there, and it's just been a real unsafe situation. So I think we're going to restrict parking on one side of the road. So you'll still be able to park on one side, but the other side is going to be opened up so people can walk safely and cars can get around, because it's not going to be long before someone is going to get hit or get hurt there. So that's, I just wanted to give people up to speed on what that order was about.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can we get a roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
That's five yeses collectively.
And unfinished business?
We start with 131-24, amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181, land use regarding pine tree contract zone. This is the first reading.
Are there any public comments?
Zach, will you just give a brief summary? Oh, you can motion to wait.
Want to stop the reading then?
Sure. The town of Standish hereby ordains as follows. Additions are underlined.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I need to abstain from voting and discussion because of a conflict of interest.
Duly noted. Zach?
Yeah, so just, just a little context. This is the second vote on this contract zone tonight. Before it stops the council process and goes to planning board for site plan and subdivision review, I would urge, if the council has any lingering questions or comments about this agreement, I would urge them to ask them tonight, so we can get this document when it comes back for the, for the final meeting here. The document can be, the document needs to be as final as possible. That's really it. Again, the, you've seen it before, so the park is here obviously to present their thing. And if Mark has any other questions or, you know, comments, go forward.
Sure. I'm happy to, Mark Bauer, Town Attorney, I'm happy to be here to answer any questions as we move forward in the next step of the process. As just a reminder, you know, it's a three-step process for, you know, for the applicant and for the members in the audience. You did the introduction back in, was that December? That passed, went forward, but there were some comments at that time and some questions, so I think wanted to come back. And the applicant came back with, with some slight changes that they'll talk about, I'm sure. And if there are any questions about, that were raised from last time, or any, any further, you know, clarifying things about the agreement, I'm happy to respond to those this evening.
Zach, can we clarify, on here it says first reading, but I believe you just said it was the second reading?
No, we had no apologies. It is the first reading here, and then it'll come back for a public hearing after the planning board process.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Good there? All right. If we can have public comments?
Yep. Go ahead.
Yep, you're all set.
Sure, thanks. And I should be to five minutes, because I think everybody's seen it for some time. My name is Bill Anderson. I'm with Atwell. We're development consultants. I'm here with, with the owners and our local engineer for any questions, including Joel Brown, our president of RHP Properties. Again, just introduce the team. We did get, in December, we had some comments. So what we went back is we just responded to those comments on the agreement. Some of these responses were from the attorney, some of them were for us. We wrote those out and provided them in a letter format to you. So if you had any questions on that response, then we're here for it. Just brief history on this job. Owned the property since 19. We went to the Board of Appeals approval process, which is fairly a comprehensive process. We did that in '21. About a year and a half after that, we had multiple environmental studies, met with the states and feds, and did a lot of engineering studies, and got the layout and everything approved by your Board of Appeals. Then we started the site plan process, actually went to the planning board. So we got feedback once or twice from those folks. It was determined we needed to take a different route on our, our procedure based on our layout. So we started the contract zoning agreement. We met with you in workshop almost a year ago, March of '24. We've worked with your team for, I don't know, eight or nine months on the agreement you have in front of you. And again, in December, we were there. So just a quick history on that. The next slide there, Zach, that's just the development. We got 166 acres of raw property. When we're done, this will be our final expansion. We're still going to end up with about 118 acres of open space. But in the southeast corners, you can see highlighted there, we got 133 proposed new home sites to add to the community. Next exhibit was just an exhibit of our existing community water system, because there's been a lot of historical discussion on that, what the system looks like. Lot of the improvements we're proposing in the distribution system, that's an exhibit of that. I would add that as part of the proposed expansion, we're also modifying the pumps, adding some additional storage in the wellhouse. All that, and by the way, the wellhouse is located in the existing community. All that will, in addition, improve the overall performance for our system there as well. But that exhibit you have, that's that. Zach, and then just two little comments of what's, you know, what's happened since September. One of the comments, and it's in there, that they wanted us to look at the amenities that we were proposing. So what we did and what's in the revised agreement is very minor changes, but we added a gazebo gathering area with some seating that we're proposing to put in our, in our clubhouse area up front. We have a little area up there, so a little outdoor social area. And then we're also adding, I guess I'd call it an adult swing to our playground area. That's been discussion, been discussion with our residents, because the other comment is we wanted to increase communication with our residents. There's a new regional manager with us. They're, they're pledged to meet with our residents, at least on a quarterly basis. I think they've had two meetings since December, and one of that was the addition of a swing, and we're going to, we're going to add that. But just good feedback. So we got a regular meeting process set up. We're also committing to doing a newsletter out to our, our residents as well, monthly. So I think, I think that should be, play well for everybody. And that, but that's really it, what we had. We're here to answer any other questions. Your attorney's here for the agreement, and appreciate your time.
Are there any other public comments? Excellent. You got somebody else? Okay, great.
Hello?
Could you state your name and address?
Teresa Kim, 5 Rich Lane in Pine Tree Estates.
Thank you.
We have met with the regional manager twice since the last meeting. Projectedly, we're going to be meeting monthly with her. As far as any updates for the park, there's been a water break since December 18th, and we've brought that to the park's attention. They have been trying to look for it. However, no notice has been sent out to residents. I sent out a Facebook message in a group we have to say, take precautions. They know there's a break. They've called the state in. The state can't find it. So the goal is to call them back in the spring when the ground is thawed to try to find it. In the meantime, we've had two residents that's lost their hot water tanks. We've had one resident that just had to replace all their faucets in their home. That sand came out of it. So somewhere, there's a break, actually multiple, because it's different lines according to their map. The regional manager is aware of it. Her response was, they didn't send a notice out because they didn't want to create panic and have the manager of the park get excessive phone calls. So I've asked them to at least send out a message saying, hey, there's a potential break. Take precautions. At least it's something instead of nothing. That's being addressed. As far as the playground expansion with the swings, we have asked for that. They have said they're going to do it. We have also requested in the process that it be a special needs swing, because the current playground is not ADA compliant. So that was one request. One question that is being asked is, does the town have capacity through the attorney to enforce any of this contract? Because I know that was questioned by quite a few. And I think, check my notes. Speeding's still an issue in the park. I know the sheriff's been notified, but they just told me in the parking lot before I walked through the door that they can still not patrol because it's a private way. They can make an increased presence, but as far as doing any citations or anything for the speeding issue, they can't unless it's actually criminally related. So that's not going to be done. That's understandably so on the sheriff, not so much RHP, but there needs to be something as far as H, RHP's concerned, if it's in their rules. If they're going to have rules, they should be at some capacity to be enforceable. And if they're not enforceable, then it would make sense to take them out and not keep noticing the residents. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
I've, Mark, did you, and I thought JP said, like, we, our, our hold would be, we wouldn't give permits until everything on our list was done.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things with the agreement. One is, there are certain things that are, that are triggered, you know, including, there's some things that, that building permits will not be issued until, until certain things happen. So that's one piece of the agreement. The other piece of the agreement is that it's important to keep in mind that contract zoning agreement is part of your zoning ordinance. And so it's enforceable in the same way that any other provision of your zoning ordinance is enforceable by the code enforcement officer, JP. So there's also a section in the ordinance, or in the, in the agreement 5E, and that's on the next to last page, that talks about enforcement and how the town has the power to enforce all conditions and restrictions of this agreement, both through an enforcement action pursuant to Article 7 of the zoning ordinance, which is the, you know, the standard enforcement provision, and 30A MRS Section 4452, which is the state statute that allows for land use enforcement. So to, to, to the town manager's point, to begin with, there are certain things that need to be met before building permits will be issued. So that's one sort of, I guess, enforcement mechanism. But the other is, once the project, once the project is fully built out, or even during, during buildout, they're subject to meeting all of their conditions in this agreement. If not, then they are subject to an enforcement action, which carries with it, as you know, fines and penalties and attorney's fees and that kind of thing.
Sweet, thank you. John, will you come up? I have a question. I was like, you're a deputy. You were a deputy for 20 years, and I know you took me through there. If you saw someone speeding, are you not able to? What, how is that?
Only if it raises to a criminal level, so some type of recklessness, that it would be a criminal charge. But as far as a speeding ticket that can't be enforced on a private way.
I'll ask you a question today. Could I, because I was going to ask, can the, because they are roads and it's not like a driveway, can the owners of the park give the permission to enforce like a speeding ticket on a private way?
They can't, no.
They can't, okay.
They can have their own in-house citation, meaning like, if something were, that would allow them to do that, meaning...
They had their own security or something that was patrolling through there?
It wouldn't be done through the court system. It would be done through their own...
Like a private fine or something, or, yep. I'm going to come to you in a second. Yes, sir.
So John, let me get this, if, if someone calls and said a car is speeding up and down, you can't go into that park?
If it is reckless, they could be charged with a criminal violation. So like, I can arrest somebody for OUI on a private way.
Right, yes.
But not for speeding, for going 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. It's not, it's not permissible by state law to do that.
And now if they're coming off the main road and they're speeding, and then they go in there and you're speeding, you can follow.
If a violation occurs on the main public road...
You can follow in.
You can write them. You can still have legal right to go in there. But again, the question is, it's a private road. That's where the, the issue is, not a public way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on the speeding note, yeah, we did notify our residents of that. And I would tell you that we do have speed bumps in there. They're temporary. We pull those out in the winter for maintenance. So we can evaluate again in the spring, but we're hoping that notifications, it's going to get mentioned in our newsletter as well. Hopefully, we'll deal with it. But if it continues to be an issue, we'll have to look at a more permanent type speed bump, and we're not opposed to that.
Thank you.
Anthony Folsom, Standish resident. Thank God I don't live in the trailer park, in my personal opinion. But I just see that the trailer park has a lot of rules and regulations and codes to go by. They should be held in the same standard of trying to build by our codes that we have in Standish. Another thing that I'm concerned about, I've just found out, is somewhere on that property, there's a bunch of trailers, oil tanks, and all kinds of things buried in the trailer park from previous owners. I would like to have that researched and figure out where those tanks and trailers are. Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question?
One second. Once we finish with, are there any other community, public comments? Sorry. I will close that and open it up to the council. Mr. Deacon?
I wanted to ask, is the concern that whatever is buried could adversely affect the water supply? Is that, what is the concern about something being buried? Is it the water supply or something else?
Yeah, many things. With the oil tank in the ground, the aquifer in that place is unreal. It goes into Josie Brooks, that goes into the Saco River. There's many places that's very much wetland in that area. And I was told by this, by someone that did some of the work. I will look into it to find out exactly where it is, but they seemed like it was a very big concern to the town, that they should know about it and where it is. So I think it's somewhere down back. I'm not sure. I'm not sure where it is, but it is a concern for people that live in that area, so.
I have a different question.
Sure.
Wanted to ask our attorney, there's, on the diagrams and maps, they talk about valves and hydrants and piping. Is there a, is, does contract zoning have, permit performance requirements, such as no more than X number of water breaks in a certain time period, or requiring that residents be notified within a certain time period of... be notified within a certain time period of water breaks or certain other corrective measures that would be taken to provide alternative to water if there were water breaks?
The contract zoning agreement does not contain provisions like that. The, what the contract zoning agreement contains with regard to the water system is a requirement that prior to the issuance of building permits for the proposed expansion, that the water system be improved and there's a, and this is in the bottom of page four in Section four G. Those are all the the water system improvements that have to be overseen by licensed professional engineers, meet all the state health regulations and so forth. So that's what the that the provisions in the agreement that deal with water have to have to do. You may be sort of getting at maybe what some state regulations require on the main drinking water program and those would sort of be enforceable differently, not through the contract zoning agreement, but perhaps through, and I'm not as familiar with how to enforce, you know, potential violations of, those would be DHHS regulations that deal with the main drinking water program. So I'm not sure if that's what you're, you know, kind of talking about.
Yeah, so if there are situations of there's lack of drinking water because of repeated breaks or residents are have breaks but they're not notified so they can take precautions to protect their own safety and health of themselves and their family, what obligations would the, those who operate the the park have? And are there ways that the public can ensure that they should be able to stay safe? And what is our obligation as a town or the state to ensure that the residents are properly notified of things? For example, if there is contamination from something being buried in the ground or who's monitoring the water? And is it, you know, schools do testing of their water supplies to see if there is lead? What's, what, who is looking out, what are the residents of the park to ensure that if there's a break, they're notified? If there's contamination, that they're able to get alternative sources or other ways to enforce water quality?
Yeah, and I and I'm happy to to look further into it. I just, I'm not super familiar with the main drinking water program regulations and those would be through DHHS probably. I can certainly research that and get back to the council if that's something you would like. But with regard to the contract zoning agreement, what's being proposed is a provision that's not, that's basically a essentially a concession on the part of the park owner to improve the existing water system, not the one that's in the proposed part of the park, but what but in the the part of the park that's already there, to improve that, which would go beyond sort of what would typically be required because, you know, usually you go through planning board process, you need to, you know, make improvements to the area that's being developed, not the, not the area that's already developed. So that's, that's one of the, you know, sort of negotiating points or the or the concession. So that's what's required under the agreement, is improvements to the existing water system and that's laid out in Section four G. But in terms of, you know, further enforcement of, you know, main drinking water program regulations or things like that, would be done through the state. And if the council would like, I can, you know, research that and get back to you.
If someone were drilling for water now at a home, typically they have to reach a point where there isn't openings to surface contamination. The water supply at part of the park, the older area, has a sandy area for which they draw their water, which the sand is a great purifier and gives you great quality, but it's open to contamination from other surface sources. So what is there that might require them to drill a well instead of relying on that area that's potential to contamination from the surface? Is there anything?
Again, I would need to do some research on on the water regulations. It's not, you know, area of expertise for me and it's not something that the town currently regulates. So I would need to do some research into state regs on that.
Thank you.
I feel like we're, we're getting a little off topic. The question and what we're dealing with right now is on the zoning for the new project. So as as we'd love to sit and talk about old stuff and wells and things like that, we could talk about that when it comes to public hearing later on in the in the meeting. But if we could stay on topic and and if there are any other questions about these, this current topic, let's, we'll, let's hear those.
Well, probably I shouldn't speak then, John.
Well, I mean, but.
I have issues when there's been a water problem and who, who notifies the residents when there's a water problem? She said that no one's been notified that you guys had a leak and how come you wouldn't send it out and let people know? Because you're afraid they're gonna be upset? Is that what I heard? Is that true?
To my, to my knowledge, no, that sounds silly to hear it. No, I'm, I'm, I was not aware of any break. Clearly, we still have pressure and supply, so as far as I know, there's, there's not one. We can go through that. The state regulates both our design. As part of the Board of Appeals, we did an extensive third-party review of our system, both the well system, which has confining layers and all those things. So we're doing, you got septic system, you got a well system. So we've, they, we did a third-party review of of the existing system, what we needed for the proposed. It's regulated by the state. It's also reviewed by your town engineer. So our system's in full compliance with the state. There's ongoing monitoring of our water quality. We've made multiple improvements to our existing well, our systems, our pumps, water softening. You've seen what we're proposing for the distribution. In addition to that, we're doing additional improvements to our well. So we're pretty confident where we're gonna be at at the end of the road here. And we had one break last year is what we had, is that that I'm aware of. We've improved our operator and we have an increased tech system to notify our.
So you're not aware of the break right now that she just spoke about?
Breaks show up.
Not aware of it at all?
I'm not aware of it. A pressure system.
Who would be aware of it then, if weren't you? I mean, I'm serious. I, I really struggle with this stuff because we can't go in, once you get this contract zone, you can tell us to go to hell because we, we can't come in and tell you to fix your water systems or anything else. So I'm just curious, if somebody's not telling the truth here or someone's not informed. So is it her or is it one of you guys?
Hi, Joel Brown, part of the ownership of the park. I, I, I've been here many times. I, I, I've tried to move through all of the issues that we've had. There's been a lot of issues presented. I feel like we've made progress. I am personally unaware of that break. I assure you that I will find out what went wrong with regard to the communication. I'm not suggesting that her facts are inaccurate. They are, they are probably accurate or are accurate, but I can't speak to it right now.
Would you drink water that had sand in it? In your house? Yes or no? I'm just asking because she said there's sand coming out of the things. Would you drink water with sand in it? I don't, I wouldn't. And I'm just, this bothers me that we're kicking this down the road. It sounds like, so I'm good with it. We'll, we'll sort this out, but someone in your park must know. I'm guessing there's a water break, but maybe.
I, 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 like, like every other issue that's been presented to me, I will try to find out the facts and I'll present it. I'm also very accessible, so I will, I will definitely look through it. As far as the, the, the knowledge of this particular break, I, I do not know. I'm scrambling to, to understand what may, what may have went wrong. We are, our protocol is, to answer your earlier question, if there is a break, we are to notify the residents via the tech system or also other notifications that should be sent out. I will find out what breakdown it was.
You ought to find out who told her that you didn't send it out because you didn't want to panic.
I, I understand, I, I understand exactly what the problems are.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And I, I appreciate your concern. I don't mean to cut you off, but I understand it.
I'm good, I'm good with it. And, and one other thing, and I've got a boatload of stuff, but like John said, it's not the time. It says that Pindory Estates shall offer trash collection service to all residents of the existing park and proposed expansion. Is that a cost to the person or is it, is the park picking this service up?
We intend to, to provide service. We have not made a determination as to how that, whether it would be charged or not. Certainly open to all possibilities there, but there, there are very, there are a lot of different things that in terms of costs that need to be resolved. I am open to having that a cost bear by the community, but I'd like to have, make sure that where other items regarding costs and charges are resolved as well.
I'm amazed you would put this in here and you don't even know how it would operate because it, to me, if, is everybody gonna have to sign on to this trash?
No.
Company or?
No, that, that was not the intention.
I think I would, before I put in this document, I would know how it was gonna be paid for by the residents or by the park. That's all I'm guessing on that. Other than that, I'm good. We'll, we'll deal with it later.
Zach, will you clarify? Tonight, they're just passing this forward for the, the, the shortening of the lot and then it goes to planning board and the planning board can help iron out all of these other issues.
The planning board will certainly look at the site characteristics, including environmental concerns, but this document itself, it would be, it would be good to have this document as, as final as it can be tonight. So if there are any other, you know, if there are any other concerns that you have, I would, I would air them now.
The reason they're here for contract zoning is because they had issues going through the planning stage to begin with, isn't that correct?
They're, they're here for the contract zone because the current zoning does not allow the 60-foot lots.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other council comments? Then if we could take a roll call?
Sure. Deacon?
No.
Gabba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
No.
It's two yeses, two noes. No, and in the case of a tie, it goes to unfinished business next meeting.
We're gonna move that along to next meeting?
Yep, under unfinished business.
Perfect. Okay, new business.
Yeah, we have eleven dash twenty-five, call for a public hearing for the FY twenty-six municipal budget to be held at the March 11, 2025 Town Council meeting. Order that the Town Council calls that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 11, 2025, at the Standish Municipal Center, 175 Northeast Road, Standish, Maine, during the regularly scheduled meeting at the Standish Town Council, which starts at 6:00 PM for the purpose of soliciting discussion for the FY twenty-six budget as received by the council as required by the charter.
Scott, do you want to make mention?
Yeah, the, sorry, all the distraction of everybody leaving. The first budget meeting will be on March, Saturday, March 1st. The public hearing for the budget will be that Tuesday night, March 11th.
Thank you.
Got nothing else?
Any public comments? Any council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gabba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
All right, that's five yeses. Next up, we have twelve dash twenty-five, award bid and authorized contract for Middle Road culvert replacement project, whereas a bid process has been conducted for a culvert replacement on Middle Road in accordance with Section three oh two F of the Standish Charter, now be it order that the attached bid form for the Middle Road culvert replacement project for the earthwork and materials as described in the bid specifications is hereby accepted with a cost not to exceed for the project and further order the town manager is authorized on behalf of the town to execute related contract documents.
I would like to make amendment to the order to add Baldwin and Son as the contractor for $621,840. Eight hundred and forty.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Anonymous? Are there any public comments?
Thank you very much. My name is Ralph McDonough. I'm the, I'm an estimator and project manager for Baldwin and Son. So thank you for your time, council. I usually was taught to live a life of great humility, but tonight, we're the best in the business, so thank you for that. The scope is very detailed and, you know, in terms of the, the traffic control plan and the stormwater pollution prevention plan, all the safety requirements. So we intend to abide by it and we're looking forward to kicking this off probably in September of this year with the delivery of the culvert. We're gonna make the in-stream window for sure. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Any other, any other public?
I have a question. Are you related to the Baldwins of the towns of Baldwin?
No, we're not. Surprised, the owners are Randy and Seth Baldwin and his wife Rebecca. We're a family business out of Harrison, but there's no relationship to Baldwin. So that's our model, where, you know, the owners and the are the operators. Of course, we have, you know, other employees, but they're on site for the duration of the project, which is always a good thing, so. Thanks for your time. Thank you, John and Ryan. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I'll speak on this.
Council comments?
Yeah.
Parmalo?
We actually had, I think, five bids on this. They ranged from $621,000 to 1.3 million. We actually had set aside in capital around a million dollars. That's where we thought we'd be at, but I'm glad we didn't tell you that. So anyways, Carl Palmer recommended these people have to review in the bid process. They said they come highly recommended. They've been on other job sites with them and we've used Carl Palmer Engineering for, I don't know how many years in this town, so it should be a good fit. We really liked the price. It come in, you know, 380,000 less than we thought it was gonna, I guess. So I'm very happy with it and we'll probably have to charge tariffs or a toll roll there to get our money back, but, but we'll figure something out then. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gabba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
That's five yeses. Next up is thirteen dash twenty-five, award bid and authorized contract for paving of various roads, whereas a bid process has been conducted for the paving on the following roads, Basin Harbor Drive, Birch Glade, Brookside Drive, Button Place, Cedar Drive, Dolph Road, Elm Street, Hanerin Drive, Heritage Drive.
Motion to waive the reading? Second that.
All in favor? So passes.
I, I'd like to make an amendment to this order to add glidin' paving, excavatin' paving for the price of $1,98,625. And what we had is the same thing. We had four bids on this. They range, we took the low bid at $1,98,000 and it went up to one point, almost 1.2 million. We've used glidin', excavatin' paving for a few years now at least. They've done a great job. There's no reason that we wouldn't use this company, plus they were a little bitter on the, on the project and so we're very happy to have this come in. And she heard about half of the roads were paving, but it's quite a few roads we have to do every year. We, we can't get behind on paving. You never can get caught up. So I think this is gonna be a good fit for us with glidin', excavatin' paving this year.
Thank you. Any public comments? Any council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gabba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses. Next up is fourteen dash twenty-five, authorized owner waste services to assume RW-Hare contract extension agreement for solid waste and roll-off container hauling originally approved June of 2024, whereas Troyana?
Second?
Second?
All in favor? So passes. Any public comments? John, did you want to introduce them or?
TJ, can you go first? TJ Tryon, Chief Operating Officer, Troyana Waste Services. Wanted to thank you guys for getting us on the agenda so quick. We acquired RW Herrick of February 1st and we'd love to continue to service the town of Standish with the same morals and service they offered and hoping for that opportunity. If you have any questions, I'm here to quite answer.
You got some big shoes to fill, bud. They're, they were probably the very best contractor this town has ever had. They never let us down. And I'm, I'm telling you, you, you should be honored to take over that company in the town of Standish. Just for, thank you.
Thank you. The good part is Bill Gooch is sticking around for a while to keep us looking good for you.
Gotta have an extended height truck for him to drive though. You do know that. He's about six foot seven, I think, isn't he? Or something like that. Has done, I can't believe the job they've done for us for the past, what, 16 and 18 years maybe?
Yeah, it's been that long.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Council comments?
I would just say John and I met with them and we were really impressed and look forward to working together. And we got a few additional dumpsters and things. So we're, we're sure it's gonna be seamless.
And they're assuming the contract that was already there?
Yep.
Good.
Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses.
So passes.
We move on to 15-25. Authorized Transfer of Waste Collection and Disposal Agreement from RW Herrick to Troyana Waste Services, Inc.
Motion to waive the reading? Second?
All in favor? Ananamous? Any public comment on this one? Any council comments?
John, anything you wanted to add real quick?
This is just, there's two contracts that we have with them. So that's why it's a difference. One's for the transfer station. One is for the parks and picking up the trash at down hall, front load dumpsters. So that's why there's two orders for that.
Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses. And then we have 16-25. Accept resignation from Budget Committee Member. Order that the resignation of Budget Committee Member Rosemary Kane submitted on February 4th, 2025 hereby accepted.
Any public comments? Council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses. 17-25. Town of Standish Council Orders Authorizing Tax Anticipation Borrowing. Ordered that-
Make a motion to waive the reading? Second?
All in favor? Ananamous?
And so this order just is really a standard thing that comes forward from time to time that we're just gonna essentially borrow forward in the anticipation of our tax collection. I don't know if Scott wants to dive in a little deeper than that?
I would just say we have authorization to borrow up to 2.5 million. And we'll borrow that as needed.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, public comments? Council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses. 18-25. Town of Standish Orders of Town Council Authorizing Issue of $1,000,000 Principal Amount of Bonds and Notes in Anticipation of Such Bonds.
Motion to waive the reading? My second?
All in favor? Ananamous?
So this order is similar just to borrowing in anticipation of the bond notes.
Correct. This would be for borrowing money to purchase the, the culvert for Middle Road. We have authorization up to a million, but I would only borrow 621,000 that we need.
Thank you. Any public comments? Council comments? Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you. Are there any public items out there?
We have the addition-
Oh, we added one. Yes, sir, we added one. Yep.
All right, so that is waive bid requirements and authorize the purchase of used chipper for the Public Works Department.
Motion to waive the reading? Second?
All in favor?
I'll speak on this. What has happened is in this year's budget, we had a chipper in there. Our other ones are 91, I think. Is that correct? And basically it's pretty well-used up. Safety is not there. We'd put it in. Happened to be on a website with Kenan Auction. There's a hardware store going out of business in Garden, Maine. And everything they have is going through auction. And I happened to see a chipper. So I called John immediately and he got on it. And it was, it's kind of really exactly what we need. But it's an auction. We don't know if we'll get it or not. It's a bid and we don't know what, what's gonna happen. So what I had offered with John, as we discussed it tonight, is that we would put $45,000 in there because the new chipper is around 75,000 for this. So we felt if we could get this chipper, we could save at least 30,000. It might go for 15,000 or 18,000. You never know. You're bidding against everybody in America that wants to be on that site that day. I think John's crew is going up a couple, the mechanic can look at it. It's got 54 hours on it. And that's, you know, that's a week, weeks worth of work basically on the chipper. And so 2024. So what we have to do is establish a money trail for him to buy the bidder. So we have to waive the bid process for this. And obviously, if he doesn't get it, then that 75,000 one's gonna still be in our capital plan because we desperately need one. So that's why it's here tonight. And we're just thinking outside the box and hoping to save the town a boatload of money. And that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. Public comments? Council comments? Mr. Deacon?
If the new chipper is 75, is it worth increasing the amount of 45 to something somewhat higher? We could still, for 55, we'd still save 20,000 and get a practically brand-new piece of machinery? Oh, you know, I, I agree with you there. We put a number that we felt that would buy it. But there again, he's probably gonna be bidding against other towns and we're gonna be bidding also against tree companies that use these chippers. Cause this is a, a high-end, top-of-the-line chipper. That's why this hardware store bought it to rent it out because they're, they're kind of bulletproof. John's been working on possibly getting some warranty on, on it. There should be warranty still on it, but if not, he's talked to the company directly. And they said they'll work with us on, on getting a, some type of a warranty, which is what you really would like on, on, on any type of machinery. But yeah, I don't know. What, what do you think, John? It's 45?
I think that number will buy it.
I think it will buy it. I, I think. I'll go with your suggestion. You know it better than me. But I'm just thinking, you know, saving 20 is still pretty good if we don't save 30. But we'll go with your suggestion.
I'm just curious how much the 2025 model costs just to compare, just for-
So with the extended warranty, we have 75 in the capital line. But for this current model, which he says will probably go up is over 60,000. So that's why we have 75 in there.
So it's nicer than what we thought we were gonna get?
Right.
Okay.
I'm sure John will throw in a little more money if we have to, right, John? 45, you know, think of the towns, you know? I, I don't care if we want to go another five or 10. I, it's a bargain. I really, of course, Kenan isn't gonna know what we, and it's a bid. So they're not gonna say, oh, let's go to 50 because the towns put it there. There is, he's gonna be bidding against another company or another town all through it. So it isn't like if we put 50, like you said, you're still saving 25,000. But we actually moved it from 40 to 45 in capital tonight, basically, thinking that would do the trick.
How many chippers do we have right now?
Just one.
And how many do we need?
We just need one. So chipping is primarily our winter work that we do. So when it's not snowing and the banks are lower. So that's what we do is a lot of brush work. So it gets used quite a bit during, I'd say from November to like now where the banks are so tall. Also, like when we had that storm in April, we had a bunch of chipping then. The current one, the anvil is bent. So if you put a small piece of wood in it, it wraps around the drum and clogs it up. And it's not something that can be easily fixed, so.
How safe is that 91 machine compared?
It doesn't have the safety fixtures that-
This thing is so high-end, you know, as far as safety and using it. Cause you're putting 12-inch stuff in it. You're not talking little brush. You're talking stuff, this stuff going-
So are we voting to allow up to 45,000 or?
Unless someone wants to make a motion, I'm at 45.
I think if he thinks that we can get it for the 45, that we approve the 45.
Let's take a shot at it.
So, uh, any other comments?
Should we make a motion to amend that to 45,000?
Oh, I thought we did.
I thought it was already-
Did that? Okay, sorry.
I think we did.
All right. Vote on the orders amended?
Yeah. Roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Thomas?
Yes.
It's five yeses.
Where do you get all that energy as you go along through the night? Your voice gets stronger and stronger. You notice that?
Yeah. She's ready to go. She's ready to go.